For Planning and Zoning Commission, we'll call this meeting to order at 9:37 a.m. Rosalie, ready for roll call?
Commissioner Arnett?
Present.
Commissioner Curly?
Here.
Commissioner Dan Zeison? Commissioner Landau? Commissioner Lawrence?
Here.
Commissioner Montoya? Commissioner Montoya? Commissioner Millhaven?
Here.
Commissioner Slasher?
Here.
Vice Chair Limblum? Chairman Hernandez?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you, Rosalie. All right, moving on to announcements. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with the Open Meeting Law ARS 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office, and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing at www.mericopa.gov/planing. The staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance or raise your hand within go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. The chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only, and the chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. All right, so moving on, we don't have any minutes to review, so we'll move to the consent agenda, Darren.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, there are two items on consent. They are Z2024-059, known as Hyder Energy Center in District 5. It says zone change to industrial to IUPD for 4,605 acres, south of the southwest corner of Awakaliante Road and Butterfield Stage Road in the Hyder area. County plan designates this site for utilities. There's no known opposition. The recommendation is for approval in paragraph 15, subject to conditions A through B. And Z2023-156, known as Arizona Rock Depot in District 1. This is a special use permit for rock and sand storage and sales and other interim industrial uses in the Rural 43 zoning district on a 2.8 acre site east of the southeast corner of Santan Boulevard and Power Road, Chandler Heights area. County plan designates the area for rural development area. Queen Creek's plan designates the site for rural. There's no known opposition. There is support. The recommendation in paragraph 13 is for approval, subject to conditions A through H.
Great, thank you, Darren. Is there any questions of the staff from the commission? I don't believe we have anybody here in person who wishes to speak about the consent agenda. Do we have anybody online who is registered to speak? All right, hearing done, we'll close the public forum.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one correction, I said this is Rural 43, it's actually C3 commercials only.
Okay, great, thank you, Darren, for that clarification. Is there any discussion from the commission regarding the consent agenda? All right, hearing done, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve, Commissioner Lawrence.
Okay, we have a recommendation for approval of the consent agenda from Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Montoya. Are there any comments regarding the motion? All right, hearing done, Rosalie, take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Curly?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Millhaven?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval of the consent agenda by a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you, Rosalie. All right, so moving on to the regular agenda. Joel, would you like to present your case?
Chairman Hernandez, members of the commission, Jen, item three is for case SU240002. It's a special use permit request for the Legacy Recovery Center Community Residence Facility, located southeast off Lindsay Road near Chandler in District 1. Next slide. The site is home to an already operating community residence facility that currently holds 10 residents, which was approved administratively in 2023. Approval of this item would allow for six additional residents for a total of 16 residents on site, in addition to up to five members of staff on site at any given time. Staff would note that the applicant has proposed alternate conditions per the handout memo that was released yesterday that they would like the commission to consider. The changes to these conditions relate to changes in certain statutory language, as well as the elimination of condition C relating to the timeframe for this SUP. Staff believes that keeping condition C is appropriate, as in other SUPs, as it allows for a reevaluation of the site after a certain time to ensure that there would be no outstanding issues related to continued site operations. Staff is recommending the commission adopt a motion recommending the board of supervisors approve this case as per the staff report conditions, because staff believes the site is currently successful in its operations, and that the addition of six residents does not appear to impose a greater strain onto the community, and would rather serve a community benefit by expanding behavioral health services in a family-like environment. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Joel. Is there any questions of staff from the commission? All right, is the applicant here? Good morning, thank you for coming down. Would you please state your name for the record?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hernandez and members of the commission. My name is Heather Dukes, and I'm an attorney with Duke's Law, P L L C, located at 5527 North 25th Street in Phoenix. I'm here today on behalf of my client, Legacy Recovery Center, to request approval of the special use permit, as staff has presented to you. And we are asking for an increase in six residents. As they mentioned, we already have a license from the Arizona Department of Health Services to operate a behavioral health residential facility, and that is a permitted community residence in Maricopa County. If you go to slide two, please. Oh, I get to move my own slides. There we go, okay. Before I get into describing our community residence use, I'd like to introduce the members of Legacy Recovery Center. Legacy is owned and operated by two psychiatrists with over 40 years of combined experience, as well as a robust therapeutic team. Dr. Roland Segal is here with me today. He's a double-board certified medically licensed psychiatrist in Scottsdale. He was a professor of psychiatry at the University of Arizona, and he also served as president of the Psychiatric Board of Arizona, and is the chief medical officer for Valley Hospital. Dr. Ehav Abdallah is a triple-board certified in general psychiatry, consultation liaison psychiatry, and addiction psychiatry. Dr. Abdallah is experienced in treating psychiatric illness in people with complex medical and mental conditions, and is an expert in addiction medicine. I also have with me today Mr. Richard Miller. He has been working in the behavioral health field for over a decade, with significant experience in operating residential treatment facilities. He has served as CEO of several local rehabilitation facilities, and he has extensive knowledge of operations, risk management, and patient and staff safety to ensure the overall safety of this residence. Both Dr. Segal and Mr. Miller are here today if you have any operational questions, and I know that Dr. Segal would like to address you to talk about some of their missions and the overall operations at the facility. If you go, I'm going to switch it myself, remembering. Okay, I want to briefly touch on the property location and surroundings. So this is an aerial photograph taken from the Maricopa County Assessors Office. It's a 2024 aerial. As you'll notice, this property is located, its frontage is on Lindsay Road, which is a section line arterial street, and it will soon be expanded by the city of Chandler. As you can also see by the aerial photo, the area is developed with both small and large lot residences. This property and the large lot homes located on the east side of Lindsay Road are zoned Rural 43, and are in the unincorporated territory of Maricopa County. The smaller lots on the west side of Lindsay Road are located within the city of Chandler's jurisdiction. This is a close-up aerial of the property. You can see that, again, it's fairly large. It's 1.09 acres, and the home offers 8,728 square feet of livable space. There are several trees and green open space areas throughout the property, and there's a gated pool tucked behind the L-shaped residence. The prior owner constructed a walking path along the perimeter of the property to enjoy the beautiful outdoor space, and so our residents typically take like a morning walk along that walking path and stay within their property. There are solid masonry walls enclosing the property all along its sides and rear, and the property's frontage and driveway are gated to ensure privacy and controlled access. So overall, when you look at the special use permit, some of the things that you're looking for is whether the addition of six residents is going to increase traffic. And because this has frontage on the arterial street, there's going to be no increased traffic throughout the neighborhood, either to the west or the east, north or south. Residents are typically discouraged from bringing their own cars to the premises. Most of them come with no vehicle, family, deliver them to the property, they pick them back up, or they come through shared ride services. And then the staff on site, typically right now, we have between two to four staff members on site at any given time. As staff mentioned, we are asking for a max of about five staff at any given time in the day. So we are adding to this residence along the driveway on the north side of the property, nine parking spaces. This already has a sufficient room for nine parking spaces. We're just going to be actually delineating them along the driveway, and there is also a three-car parking garage. So traffic is not going to be an issue with the addition of these six residents. It's also a fairly large property. I'm going to show you a floor plan in just a second, but the amount of living space this house offers is really conducive to people in recovery. They need space, but they also need people that are in a supportive environment, that are in the recovery process themselves. So again, this is a really great property for this residential use. The numbers on the screen now, 1, 2, and 3, I'm going to show you some photographs taken from a street view at those locations and looking in those directions. This photograph 1 is the view from Lindsay Road looking west. And so this is standing right outside the property, looking west towards some of the homes. There have been some letters of opposition that have been filed by the owners of these homes, but as you can tell from this photograph, none of those homes face Lindsay Road. They're all facing the internal street, so basically they're side yards. There's two homes with side yards that face our residents. This is a view from Lindsay Road looking east at our property, and the photograph shows this is just a normal residence. It's got trees, it's got a house, it's got a yard. Right now, the grass is pretty green. So I would encourage the commission today that as you may hear from the neighbors that this is a business, this is a home, and these people are living here to be part of a recovery process and to get better and to go back to their families. And you can tell from these photographs, again, that it's just like any other type of residence on this street. This last photo I want to show you is taken, so Lindsay Road, on the west side of Lindsay Road, there's a street called Granite, and Granite is separated from Lindsay Road by this landscaped open space you can see there. And if the neighbors from the west side of Granite are looking across Lindsay Road towards our residence, you'll see that yellow arrow above our residence, that is what they will see. You can barely see the home because of all the landscaping and how big of an arterial street Lindsay Road is. Okay, so I want to touch briefly on the community residence operations. This is a site plan of the existing residents. Again, if six residents are allowed, we won't be making any changes to the exterior of the home other than delineating those parking spaces along the north side of the property. The rest of the residents will remain visually from the exterior as is. This is a floor plan of the first level. This home is two levels. There's a basement level and a main floor level. The blue stars designate the bedrooms. So there's five bedrooms on the main floor. And then there's a main living room, and then another living room, and then there's some additional, what could be bedrooms, that are going to be used for like staff areas, a nursing area, and that's to the west end of the home. I'm going to show you the basement level. There it goes. So there's going to be three bedrooms on the basement level, and then again, some additional living space and storage areas, and areas for staff on the basement level. So I took a few photographs from their website, and I've also walked through this residence in the past, and it's a very beautiful home, as you can tell from the pictures on the screen. Briefly, I want to talk about the operations. So in June of 2023, Maricopa County issued a community residence approval for this home, for up to 10 people. And then in September of 2023, my client went to the Arizona Department of Health Services, and they got a license to run the behavioral health residential facility. And basically, that is a license to allow for residents to live in a home, and they help their staff on site, there's some required staff, and that's the staff that my client is requesting your approval to have on site, the five per day. So the state regs requires to have certain staff, and those staff help with the self-administration of medication. These residents are not in detox. They have already gone through detox, some of them don't need detox, they are having some mental health issues. And so they come to this residence to receive certain therapeutic services, certain clinical services, and they just live their daily lives here. They seek to replicate a family. They do chores together, they cook together, they go on, you know, different activities together, whether it's yoga or going to certain AA meetings. So they do all these things together, and there's a van on site that transports the residents to where they need to go. In our narrative, we provided a list of the staff that would be on site. I'm not going to bore you with all those details, but basically, these are all the staff members that we need to have under the licensing statutes, and then also what we like to have as part of our everyday operations. So there will be no...
Go ahead, you're good.
Sorry. There will be no medical or treatment services provided at the property that would not typically occur in a residential setting. A nursing assessment and vitals check are completed upon intake, but those are the only medical services provided at the location. No detox occurs on site, and if the resident has a doctor's appointment or a virtual appointment with a doctor, staff will provide them with transportation or a computer if needed. Any medical concerns will result in the resident being referred to an outside provider for medical care, and all residents living at the property will be ambulatory and will be able to complete activities of daily living. So that basically describes the operations. Move forward here. Again, those are more pictures of the bathroom, the laundry room where the residents, again, do their chores, bedrooms, the kitchen, the outdoor grassy area, and then the front of the home. So one of the key elements of this property is the security and the privacy. There is a block masonry wall all the way around the property, and then substantial tree. So I'm just going to click through these slides so that you can get a feel. This is on the south side of the property. You can see the substantial walls. This is along the east side of the property, more brick walls with, again, a lot of trees. This is looking along the east property line north. The wall runs all along the fence line there. And then again, this is the north side of the property. And then this is the RV gate that basically encloses the entire backyard. I was laughing with my client, that lone basketball that's in the yard. I can relate to that with my 15-year-old son. He just always leaves the basketball in the backyard, yeah. Oh, real quick, this is the front of the property. There is a fence line along the front as well, and that is an automatic gate that's able to be opened and closed so that, you know, in the evening, if there's no deliveries, if people aren't coming and going, that gate can be closed to, again, enhance security and privacy. I touched on this briefly, but just in terms of timeline, this property was purchased by my client in 2022 by the two doctors. Unfortunately, in May of 2022, they were doing some retrofitting of the home, and the property burned to the ground, there was an electrical fire. So they then had to go to the county and get some permits to rebuild the home, and you can see the home under construction in this 2023 aerial photograph. In June 6, again, the county issued the community residence approval. And the reason why this map is important is there are two, there's an assisted living home and another behavioral health home on the west side of Lindsay Road. So that's in the city of Chandler's jurisdiction. They have been there since 2023, when we first got our community residence approval. They have five residents, to my knowledge. They still have five residents living in each of those homes. And both Maricopa County and the city of Chandler approved our location because the arterial street serves as a buffer between these residents. That is important because, in terms of Fair Housing Act with people with disabilities, the whole point of allowing these residents to live in communities of their choice is so that they're not institutionalized settings. Back in the 1960s, disabled residents started to come out of the institutions and live in neighborhoods, and they had a lot of success with that. And so when you have too many of these disabled, or these residences catering towards disabled people, like too much clustering, then you get back into that institutionalized setting. So they want them to be dispersed throughout the community, but when you have buffers like arterial streets, freeways, et cetera, that's enough of a buffer so that you're not seeing the effects of clustering. September 2023, ADHS approved our BHRF license. And so if we have an approval of the 16 residents, we will have to go back to the state and get an approval for 16. Right now, our license says 10, so again, we'll have to go back to the state and get a subsequent approval so that we're meeting all state requirements. Sorry, my clicker is not clicking. Okay, this is an August, my eyesight's bad, I think, August of 2024 email from the city of Chandler Planning Manager, who confirmed he sent our request out to all the various departments at the city of Chandler, and they came back and said they have no opposition to our increase in residents from 10 to 16. And I'm going to save the Fair Housing Act information if there's any questions about that or if I'm allowed some rebuttal, if I need to go over that. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions from the commission for the applicant? All right, thank you, and we'll proceed with the rest of the in-person speakers, and then anybody who's registered online to speak. After public comment, we'll allow time for rebuttal.
Great, thank you.
Yep. All right, let's see, we got a couple people here. Roland Segal? Good morning, thank you for coming down. Would you please state your name for the record and keep it to two minutes or less, please?
Good morning, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Dr. Roland Segal. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Heather has highlighted a lot of items that I wanted to cover, but I want to talk about my background a little bit. I have about 20 years of psychiatric experience, both inpatient and outpatient. I own a large outpatient clinic in Scottsdale with three locations. The reason why legacy came into play is because there was a significant gap between people who go into Level 1 inpatient psychiatric hospital and then outpatient treatment. That's where the residential treatment facility comes into play. The issue that we were having is that we didn't, we had problems finding good quality, well-run, high and highly regulated facilities. That's why legacy came into play, hence the name legacy. We wanted to open a facility that we would be proud of, a facility where we could actually hospitalized our friends, families, if that ever happened, something we could be proud of. And I think there is a lot of inequality and lack of inclusion and some discrimination against people with mental illness. We are always looking at treating people in a least restrictive environment. Legacy, we're very proud of, we've been open since October of 2023. We actually get people better, hence we wanted to expand the number of patients we treat. We look at our patients not as them, but us. It's a lot of our family members, sisters, brothers, parents, friends. There are a lot of people who have mental illness out there, one in five people in the U.S. About 19% of people have anxiety, 8% have depression. When people come into our facility, we do significant amount of screening. They can't be a danger to self, they can't be a danger to other people. They have to be able to take care of themselves, both basic needs, but also executive. They have to be willing and able to participate in individual group therapy, group therapy. It's important to have community integration. People have to have access to their family members and friends, and we really embrace that. People who have pets have family members, bring pets into the facility. We're all about reducing stigma of mental health. We focus on reintegration of people back into society, so they do their own laundry, they do their own cooking, they participate in groups, they do their own cleanings, chores around the house. We, as a facility, we have reduced burden to the hospitals, to the emergency services, to social services, because we take care of our people at the house. We also employ over a dozen people. Our payroll monthly is over $100,000, close to $100,000, so we do contribute back into the community, local community. As far as property values, the house has increased by about 26% since we purchased it, and that's very much in line with Maricopa County. We're fully licensed, we comply with all zoning and safety regulations. We are joint-commission accredited, that's the gold standard in the United States. A lot of facilities out there are not joint-commissioned. What that means is we actually met all the standards, very rigorous standards, for equality, safety, accountability, transparency, and regulation. They look through all of our manuals, they actually look through our medical records to make sure that we're well-qualified to do what we do. We have a partnership with over a dozen different facilities throughout the state. Many of our referrals are actually word of mouth, because we do provide such good quality of care. We do, I can talk about some case studies, but there's a lot of confidentiality issues there. We have had college students who develop mental illnesses, came into our facilities, and now are back in college playing sports. We have treated a lot of family members, mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers. So in summary, what I want to say is Legacy Recovery Center is really a valuable asset to the local community, to the state. We promote health, we promote safety, we promote economic growth, local economic growth, and we uphold those principles of equality and integration of people with mental illness into the local community.
Great, thank you, Mr. Segal. Okay, next, we have Richard Miller. Good morning, thank you for coming down today. If you could please state your name for the record and try to keep it under two minutes, please.
Morning, my name is Richard Miller. I'm a founding member of Legacy Recovery Center and the current chief executive officer there. Thank you, members of the board, for allowing us to come speak and being here today. Like Heather touched on, I've been working in the field for over a decade, almost 15 years. And in my role at that facility, there are many things that are paramount, but the things that I want to touch on today are the safety and security of our patients, the quality of care that we deliver, and the rigorous standards that we hold our staff and patients to. So from an operational standpoint, I know there's some, like Dr. Segal mentioned, some stigma in the community about mental health. There are certain diagnoses that we do not treat at Legacy Recovery Center, and that's to ensure the safety of not only our patients, but we want to be good neighbors and make sure that they feel safe and comfortable as well with our operation. So Dr. Segal had mentioned the rigorous screening. When we come across patients who have a history of violence, sexual offenses, things of those natures, it's an automatic no for admission. We don't treat those patients, we never have, and we never will. As Heather and Dr. Segal touched on, the stability of the patient, right? There's no medical detox occurring. There's also no psychiatric stabilization occurring. So patients who are coming to us are not in active hallucinate, they're not having active hallucinations, they're not having active bouts of mania. They are stable, fully functioning, and able to engage in this level of care with their residents. Our facility is staffed not only by Dr. Segal and Dr. Abdallah, but we also have licensed independent masters levels clinicians who've been practicing therapy for over two decades. So the professionals that are rendering services to these patients are highly qualified, highly experienced, and credentialed in the care we deliver. Legacy, like Dr. Segal had mentioned, legacy was formed as a desire to fill a gap in the needs of the mental health care field. We believe that we can provide a safe, stable place for residents to come, regain their foothold in life, and reintegrate successfully back into society. We've also treated physicians, we've had airline pilots, we've had a couple of attorneys. We have everyday members of society who come to us struggling with various things that they need that 24/7 care and support. If there's any questions by any members of the board, I'd be happy to go over those as well.
Great, thank you, that was very good information, thank you. Nadia, do we have anybody online who wishes to speak? Or has your hand raised? Nope. I do have a couple questions for Mrs. Dukes, if you can come back up. So I just want to confirm, this already is an operating facility and has been for over 12 months?
Correct.
And has there been any issues with any of the residents over the last 12 months?
No, we, and I...
No, we, and I requested the police calls for service from the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. I didn't get those in time for this hearing. I will have them for the board hearing, but we have not had any calls, police calls for service associated with our residents. We've had one emergency call for service where someone fainted in the home, which, you know, one call in 12 months, that could happen at any home. We've had, we have had some issues with some of the neighbors with what I would call harassment, but we have taken care of those, and we want to be a part of this community. So we have worked really hard to maintain a quiet professional residence. It's well-kept, and so that we don't have those neighborhood complaints. And we haven't had any notices of violation from Maricopa County, and we have not had any notices of violation from ADHS. If you go to azcarecheck.com and type in this address or the license number, there will be no enforcement actions regarding this license.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else in the commission have any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mrs. Dukes.
Thank you.
With that, we will close the public forum. Does anybody have any comments from the commission? All right, I guess I'll give you that.
Mr. Chair, this is, Arnett, can I have just a quick clarification?
Absolutely, Commissioner Arnett.
Just to make sure I understand correctly, there's not a current S U P on this right now, and I know we've had cases in the past, and most of those have been really lengthy, lengthy discussions about sobriety and the types of uses. There's no doubt in my mind that this is a great use. I believe the professionals that have spoken here, there's a need for that. But being a zoning case, I guess my question is this, can staff confirm or somebody confirm they're operating under the current code in Maricopa County? Everything is being complied with by right as long as it's 10, and we're here for this S U P just for this added six? That's essentially the, is that it?
Chairman Hernandez, Commissioner Arnett, yes, that is correct. They are currently operating under existing community residence approval that was done in 2023.
Yeah, so I think it's a great use. Obviously, then the question to my mind comes, you know, adding these six more individuals, does it change the feel of this neighborhood? I'm pretty convinced on a section line, it's not an issue with traffic. I don't think there's any problems whatsoever, so. But, but you know, when you start, it's not doubling, but it's making it bigger. You start to say, wait a minute, let's, let's ask what's going on here. So the question is, is why the pushback on the 10-year? And maybe the applicant can answer that.
Yeah, I think we can, yeah, Mrs. Dukes, would you like to touch on, on the 10-year S U P?
Yes, so, you know, this applicant, they're going through the S U P process, but they're also going through the site plan approval process, and during that process, they have to do a few updates to the septic system. They need to do some updates to the drywall throughout the house in order to meet the building code standards. They have to install certain improvements to the kitchen, and so all of that is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so whenever I see an expiration on an S U P or some type of zoning approval, me as a zoning attorney asks, you know, can we get rid of that expiration based on all the money that they're spending at this site for this S U P approval? One of the things that's unique about this use is because you have the ADHS oversight. Like if there's anything that's going wrong at this property, if there are, you know, things that are not being complied with, if they're being a bad operator, the state can revoke their license. So I don't necessarily have a problem with saying that if it, you know, if the use fails to be in use for a certain amount of period, then the S U P could go away. But to just have a 10-year stop timeframe, I just think in this case it's not necessary because we have the state oversight as well. But again, that's, it's, it's obviously just a request to this commission.
Great, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that feedback and for whatever it's worth. I would, I think this is great. I think it's phenomenal. In perpetuity doesn't feel totally right for me. I'd maybe do something a little longer for the investment, and then we can address it. But either way, I'm leaning, just to let the commission know, I think it's a great project. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Arnett. Thank you again, Ms. Dukes. I, I agree with Commissioner Arnett. I mean, this is obviously an operating facility already. It's a substantial-sized home on a substantial-sized lot, so I think going from 10 to 16 is appropriate. And I also agree with Arnett, I don't think that's getting rid of the timeframe is appropriate. I would be, I think, a fair compromise would be 15 or 20 years. 20 years, I think that's pretty substantial for, or pretty common for the S U P, so. Yeah, that's my two cents. If there's any other commissioners who have any thoughts? Is the applicant okay with a 20-year S U P? Yes, okay, they are telling us they are okay with a 20-year S U P, so. Anybody else in the commission have any comments? If not, we will entertain a motion. Okay, I guess I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of SU 240002 with the changed condition of the S U P to 20 years instead of 10?
Second.
Commissioner Curley, I second.
Okay, so we have a recommendation for approval by Chairman Hernandez and a second by Commissioner Millhaven. Is there any comments regarding the motion? All right, Rosalie, ready for roll call?
Commissioner Arnett?
I support, yes.
Commissioner Curley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Millhaven?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlosser?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you, Rosalie. All right, moving on to case number four, Adam.
Thank you, Chairman Hernandez and commissioners, and welcome Commissioner Millhaven. Agenda item number four is a text amendment to the Maricopa County subdivision regulations under TA 2024002. Could you go to the, oh, excuse me. Give me a second, it's a little delayed. Yeah, could you go to the second slide? Thank you. So as part of this process, our text amendment schedule, we held a stakeholder meeting on, in May of 2024, followed by a zipper meeting, which is a zoning infrastructure policy procedure and ordinance review committee meeting with the commission where we discussed our plan changes to the text amendment. We took that feedback, went about and drafted a draft text amendment. We held a second stakeholder meeting on August 13th, and then went back again and conducted some additional drafting of this text amendment. And so today, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. We'd like to follow that up next month with the Board of Supervisors hearing. And if adopted, it would take effect a month after the Board of Supervisors' decision on that. Next slide. So as part of the background why we're doing this text amendment, first, Maricopa County subdivision regulations were originally adopted in 1975, and the last real substantial update to the regulations occurred in 2002. And so recently, the legislature and the governor signed a state law that permits counties and municipalities to approve Platts administratively versus having them come to a hearing for preliminary Platts at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then a hearing for final Platts at the Board of Supervisors. And so as of right now, the preliminary and final Platts are processed ministerially. And like I said, with preliminary Platts being approved by P and Z and then final Platts by the board. So our view is that updating the subdivision regulations to allow administrative approval of Platts will help streamline the process and should eliminate several weeks of processing time for applicants and for staff. And so an applicant under this change would still be offered the ability to appeal a likely rare staff denial to the commission for pre-Platts and for the board for final Platts. And then we also, as part of the subdivision regulation update, looked at some other areas where we could improve them to provide some modernity and clarity to the regulations. Next slide. This chart on your screens just shows the preliminary plat timeframe, the process for that. It's about three to five months, depending upon, you know, the quality of an applicant's middle. But if you notice at the bottom there, there's this peasy hearing where there's four weeks built into that for sign-off, getting the staff report ready, and then bringing that plat to you. Next slide, please. The new preliminary plat timeframe would eliminate potentially four weeks, bringing that timeframe down to two to four months versus the three to five months of processing time. Next slide. On the Board of Supervisor side of things, for final Platts, again, there's, you know, a review processing timeframe of three to five months, and then you've got four weeks required to, for the Board of Supervisors' hearing. So, next slide. So with the new final plat timeframe, that would again potentially eliminate the four weeks of processing, bringing that timeframe down to three to four months approximately. Next slide. So our key recommendations is to continue the current process we have for the most part, but approve subdivisions administratively that would consist of staff handling that versus the commission and board. We also are recommending to delete the administrative guidelines from the subdivision regulations and move those to the application packets where they're more appropriate. Most of those are technical requirements, like what scale you have, things like that, that we feel really could, it would benefit the regs to move them to the applications. And then lastly, remove some outdated requirements, particularly as it pertains to engineering. There's a lot of references in the ordinance where it references some old documents that, that aren't necessarily used, so we're, we want to improve that for our applicants and for staff use. Next slide. In summary of our public participation on this matter, as you, as I already mentioned, we held two stakeholder meetings, and this text amendment was noticed through the Enhanced Regulatory Outreach Program. Those are people who register for any regulatory updates with the county. We have a list of about 3,000 people that we email through each step of this process. And so we also received some feedback from the development legal community, citizens, state agencies, and some municipalities. In terms of support and opposition, we had five in support and four opposed. Opposition is mainly from citizens concerned about the process and the broader impacts of growth within the county, so the more subdivisions you have, you know, what impacts do that have on transportation and other, other things? And then that removal of the public hearing requirement would limit public involvement. There's no known opposition from the development community, and many of the municipalities commented that they're considering updating their subdivision regulations or are in support of the text amendment. So with that, if there's any questions or comments that the commission has, I'd be happy to answer those.
Great, thank you, Adam. Is there any comments or questions for staff from the commission? All right, not hearing any. I don't believe we have anybody here to speak. Is there anybody online?
Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, this is Bobby Lamrow with Arizona Game and Fish. Thank you, Adam, and the commission for letting me speak today and come online on this meeting. We just have a small concern, the department does, with potentially expedite in this process. We just want to make sure that we're at least somewhat involved on major cases that require rezoning in some certain areas. Please correct me if I'm wrong or if I'm not fully understanding the details, but I know that we would at least like to be notified on any sort of major zoning changes that might get changed during these, these small little pieces. We likely won't have many comments, but we definitely would like to be at least involved and kept in a loop during this and then provide comments if necessary.
Mr. Chairman, for those online, this is Darren Gerard with the Planning Department. Mic's on. We, I need to speak into the mic. Darren Gerard with Planning and Development. We will, this will not, this process, making Platts administrative, will not affect the rezone, the zone change process. Zoning cases will still be processed through public hearing with public input, public notice, including our secondary routing agencies like Game and Fish and, and other agencies for review and comment. That will not change. And there still will remain technical review on the administrative Platts. So we'll still be seeking comment from review agencies on the Platts. It just won't have a public outreach component or public meeting. So the zone changes are not impacted. Game and Fish, other agencies will still be a part of that review and comment and public hearing process.
Great, thank you for the clarification, Darren. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak online? Nope, all right. Is there, one last time for the commission, is there any questions or comments from staff? All right, with that, we'll close the public forum. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve case TA 2024002.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to recommend approval from Commissioner Millhaven. Do we have a second? All right, who's that?
This is Lauren, yes, sir.
Okay, we got a second by Commissioner Lawrence. Are there any comments of the motion? All right, Rosalie.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Curley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Millhaven?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlosser?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you, Rosalie. And I apologize for everybody for not welcoming our newest commissioner, Millhaven, from District Two. Welcome to the commission, we're glad to have you. She replaced Commissioner Swart. So anybody gets a chance, please reach out to her and welcome her to the commission. With that, Darren, are there any other matters?
We're looking for a commissioner to possibly be appointed to the Plan Advisory Committee for our complan update that's just getting started. For your consideration, maybe you can let us know by the next meeting.
Okay, sounds great. With that, the meeting is adjourned at 10:26 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you.